If we could all rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Sorry, we're running a little late. If we can start, we have, let me just get them, we have minutes of our public meeting held here on October 2nd. If I could have a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Could you pass that down, please? Then we have our minutes of our board meeting. This would be a non-public meeting that was held on October 2nd. If I could have a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make that motion to accept.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Pass it down for Travis, please. Then we have our minutes of our selectmen's budget workshop minutes held on October 2nd. If I could have a motion to accept those.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. We'll sign those, please. Okay, our first order of new business is a sewer, a sewer abatement request.
I think Mr. Andrews is here, who has requested to speak with the board.
All right, Mr. Andrews, if you'd like to come and sit.
You do have the supporting information in your packets. His request and the Tom Burke's backup information, and she's also here to answer any questions.
Okay, all right. Mr. Andrews?
I received a bill for the first time after owning my house for four years. I bought my house November 4th, 2000, it'll be November, it'll be four years this November.
Mm-hmm.
And I've never received a sewer bill. Not, not even one. Not, you know, I've registered for taxes, I've registered my house. I changed my address, I received tax bills, I received pretty much everything at my house that when I get a bill in, I pay it. I'm not here to fight the, obviously, the sewer bill, but I'm here to fight the liens that I have no idea about. Interest payments and all of the penalties and all of that. You know, it's like, you're kind of like hiring a plumber to come do plumbing and then they have a bill you and then put a construction lien on your house. And you're like, I didn't get a bill to pay. Just, if I get a bill, I pay it, you know. That's, that's kind of where I'm at. I received this that says on it that we think we've been mailing your bill somewhere else to the wrong address, and that's obviously the case, but on the bill is my name, my wife's name, the address of record, which is the 173 Union, and I've never received a bill. This new bill has my address on it. I know Jen, Jennifer had done her due diligence because she knew her, well, one year in service, going through unpaid, unpaid stuff and came across and happened to do this on her own, she said, because I thought better. And, but I don't understand how all of a sudden I got the mail, the mail to my house, which shows my address here, my address on the bill, everything else. I mean, I owned the house in Scarborough that I had, I had my own sewer, so I never received a bill over there. So, I didn't know if sewer was part of taxes or anything of that nature, because I just never received a bill to, to pay it. I have received water bills in my last one, which is out of the same, out of the same location, sewer and water. And I, I pay those, you know what I mean? So that's kind of where I'm at is, I receive a bill for $1,200 bucks and now I know that there's another lien that wants to get put on for 24 and more interest and so forth, so it's going to be about $1,200. I don't think I'm through that. I don't think I'm through those fines and definitely not the liens. I mean, you know, the liens, I've also never been notified by anybody that I even have a lien on my house either. You know, I've never received mail for any of it until I received this bill.
Okay, all right. Jen?
When I was going into my deed process, I did come across his, his property. And I'll just point out, this is your mailing address for your bills. But this is your property, you guys, this is the mailing address that we have for tax bill of water, and it's really not water, but sewer. And I came across it, noticed that it hadn't been paid in years. I noticed the, the address in Maine. So I just, I was like, oh, maybe he never got his address changed. So I sent him, as per, to see a letter at the end of August stating what the situation was. This was my belief. You guys have a copy of that letter. Saying that we're in the deeding process because the town is well within its rights to take the property by deed for unpaid sewer amounts as well in arrears for three years. And didn't hear back, I think, last week, we spoke, Mr. Andrews and I spoke. I understand what he's saying. It is confusing because you come in and you register your car, you registered a vote, but car registration, voting, and taxes are three completely separate entities. They don't cross over at all. It's, I do know that when a person buys a property in the town of Belmont, they're sent a packet from the assessing department asking about, questions about the purchase of the home, including a change of address form, which I also sent to Mr. Andrews, which I still haven't received back. You know, I, I know when you buy a house, when I bought my house, I was fully made aware that it was well in subject.
That was where I was going to go with this. When you did your closing and you bought this house four years ago, you must have received a closing statement which would have indicated on it that at that, the date of closing, the water and sewer would have been paid up to date as part of your closing papers, so.
I know I have sewer, I just have never received a bill to pay. That's what I mean, is I understand, like,
But, but your closing papers.
Go searching my, everywhere just to find bills that I, you know what I mean? We don't go search, like, I have received every bill in my entire life for anything that I've ever needed to pay. And not this one.
I will also say that his tax bills are not being sent to his address in Belmont, it's being sent to the Maine address. Your taxes are escrowed. I did research on the, the payments over the years, so your mortgage company pays some, so.
Right.
If you never got that bill, it would be paid automatically on your behalf. And also the deed to your home is in the Maine address as well, as a registry of deeds.
I don't even understand it, because like, I.
Because that is where you.
And, but I've changed all my addresses with everything that's ever come to me for, for changing my address. Like, so this is my third house, and I've never had an issue with any of these, with any type of thing like that.
Yeah, I understand the confusion, I certainly do.
And blah, 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 it's just.
But I guess that with, you stating that you weren't made aware that you did have town sewer, and I understand we don't seek out ways to spend our money, but there's a level of accountability there, knowing that you should have been billed so the town has been here and we're always.
There must have been a bill that day for sewer at the closing.
And I, yeah.
Must have been a.
It was just part of closing costs.
Right, closing costs, right. There would have been a sewer.
And again, like I said, if, if I had received a bill, it would have been paid. Again, I've never received, even that I have liens and such on this, I mean, the town, the.
I do have all the returns.
The chat, the, the address of record is 173, and there's just never been anything even just sent there just to, just to see. I mean, no correspondence from myself for four years and nobody, like, all of a sudden now that there's a correspondence, there's like, okay, now, now we have your address.
This, this was a courtesy. I'm not required by law to send it to you.
That we've been mailing it to the wrong address. I mean, all, like I said, I'm not looking to sit here and argue back and forth and blah, blah, blah. The main part of this is I have no problems paying my sewer bill. I have no problems going right down, following you right down and paying you today for my sewer bills. It's all the rest that all of a sudden I have, I have liens on my house and I have all, all sorts of stuff that's never been noticed to me until, oh, now I have, now I have, I, I have your address. I all of a sudden can get, can get stuff sent to me.
No.
Okay.
You have the, the address on record is the Maine address of Troy. I assume it's the address you lived in when you bought the house.
When I bought the new one, I filled out the, the packet, because, I mean, I, I received welcome stuff from the town of Belmont, all of that, and what, like, why wouldn't correspondence, like, I, when my taxes went up, I received the tax bill to say that you haven't, you haven't paid your tax bill because I have a tax lien on my house because the taxes went up.
Nope, the liens on your house are all sewer.
And I, I, no, because it's.
Excuse me, the correspondence that you would have received would be from your mortgage company because they are a vendor of our house.
I received a phone call and a letter from the town of Belmont saying that I have a lien on my house and my taxes are, are bad, so I need to contact my mortgage company. So I contacted my mortgage company saying, what the hell, I paid more.
We don't.
Pay more mortgage than.
We wouldn't call you because we don't have your phone number. Every correspondence that we do through the tax collector's office is through mail because we don't have those records.
Right.
Well, obviously, it's not through mail. I considerably have received.
Before you cut me off, so your address of record was the house that you bought, when you bought the Belmont house. So part of the transition is we, we get the deed transfer, we send you letters because we have to obtain information if it's about qualified sale. We also say, hey, you have to also update your address on record because this is the address here. So it, if you did do a change of address, it never happened, it never got back to Belmont. So it, you, every time we, and we can't go in and change your address in the system. So what happened is we sent out the notices, it goes to the address on record, we can't legally change your address. Jen, coming into her new position, cleaning up all the liens and deeds, says, hey, he hasn't been getting his, we've been getting this back, he hasn't paid for the last four years, why don't we, as a courtesy, send it to the address in Belmont? We're gonna assume that you live there. So that's what we did in the August letter. You also still haven't changed your address with us. We can't go in and change that address. So the next water, or the sewer bill that's going to go out is going to go back to Maine and then, so you still have any minute effort to come in and change that address.
Well, this, this whole thing was, was handed off to, to try to figure out what the hell is going on. So I haven't, I haven't filled it though, I have it right here. I didn't have this in my possession for, for three weeks. And then I called Jen as soon as I got back, as soon as I got this back, because it was said that I, that nothing could be done without coming in front of you folks. And, you know, that I'd have to comment and figure what the heck is going on, I mean.
So as soon as you've added your change of address, we are more than happy to make that official and then you should continue to get your bill to us as your chip.
Why is, I mean, nothing has.
Okay, Travis.
Where do we go?
Excuse me, Travis?
In my mind, I feel like this was an accidental mistake, whether it's from us or on your behalf of not getting information done. I would have no issue with waiving the interest and fees as long as this gets cleared up today and that change of address comes back to us so we can maintain that this does not happen again, because I would not be willing to do it again. I mean, but I do, as long as, I mean, I'm not willing to obviously bait a sewer bill because that's the bill, the bill's the bill.
No, and I, like I said, I'm not looking to do.
So what are you looking, what are you looking at as far as?
I mean, I'm willing to bait the interest and fees as long as we get that bill cleared up ASAP within, you know, 24, 48 hours and we get that change of address.
I'm on today and I'll follow her down and pay the whole thing.
Because I'm, I mean, I'm willing to understand that mistakes do happen, whether it's our side, your side, whoever's side, I'm not here to point blame. I just want it cleared up and not to happen again.
So what amount?
That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking.
I want them to pay the 712.
$712.76. Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Did the liens, putting the liens on the property cost the town a lot of money?
That's.
So where it says lien total, is that the cost of the sewer bill plus the cost of the liens on?
So the first column is the year, second column is the original fees that were owed.
Yeah.
The third column is the interest at the time of the lien, because when the lien occurs, that interest just gets all bundled in with the, the principal that was owed. The fees and costs, and in your packets, it has a listing of where the fees and costs come from. It's notification, it's certified mailing, so on and so forth. That happened at the time of the lien, and then there's additional fees and costs because we have to do mortgagee searches and mortgagee notifications at any time there's a lien. And then with this particular year, there was extra fees because of deed searches for the deeding process. So where it says fees and costs and additional fees and costs, those are the costs that the town would recoup if anyone were to redeem a lien.
So in other words, what you're saying is the 712 is the sewer bill.
Correct.
The $84 is what we've had to pay for postage or whatever.
And.
And then, okay, the deed search, is that something that we pay for or is it our time?
We pay for that.
We pay for that and that is the additional, no, that's.
No, there's additional fees every year for mortgagee searches.
Yeah, that's 116?
Yeah, the 116.25 and the recording fees for the registry of deeds and so on.
I think the, one thing that, I think what we've done even in the past is that we have waived interest because that's not something that necessarily comes out of, that is our employees' time, basically. I do have an issue with just the fees that we had to literally pay, all right, being the, the postage, being the deeding costs.
Was that paid out of my taxes, but I paid you this?
No.
I mean, how, how does, how do, where does?
It's part of running, it's part of running the town being.
But, like, where does that money come from?
What?
Where did?
I can answer that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So when you pay off a lien, or when anybody pays off a lien, it's included in those costs as it's, it's here on your bill of incharges. So when you pay off that overdue amount, we recoup that in that way, at that time.
But what I'm saying is, like, where, where does the money that you guys pay for?
Out of our general.
Out of everyone's, we all pay taxes in this town.
Isn't that what they have?
And so obviously, I don't want to be paying my taxes and have to be paying liens because you've been neglect, okay? So my feeling is, all right, and, and to be fair, okay, obviously, there was an address, however the communication is, all right, the town doesn't have your correct mailing address, period, all right? We can argue it forever. My feeling is, and I'm not trying to overstep Travis's motion, but my feeling is, is that you should be paying the sewer fees, all right? Because we have to do that as taxpayers, but we have to above and beyond pay the fees for mailing, which is not cheap, we all know, and also for the deed search, which we had to do to figure out what's going on with that. I would ask Travis to amend his motion that not.
I didn't make a motion. I didn't make a motion.
Oh, you didn't make a motion? I'm sorry, I thought you did. I'm sorry. My feeling would be that we can waive the interest, okay? But my feeling is, is that the initial cost, the hard cost being those three items, which if I added correctly, Jen, is $913.01.
That's what I got.
Well, my biggest concern is, why did you wait four years to get this squared away? Why, why did you wait four years?
I just received this. I have no idea that.
Well, you must have known you had a sewer bill back in '22.
That's what I'm saying, is like, is when you come to, you know, I put 90 grand down on my house, which included all, 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 which included all closing costs and blah, blah, blah. It's just, okay, all you do is come in with 90 grand and it gets taken care of and you sign off. And you have a stack this big. I understand you're supposed to read every single thing. I, I do get that. I, like, I understand that. I just, I never received it. I've never had a sewer bill. I've had water bills, I've had all that.
You think sewer, did you think sewer was free?
No, I assumed it was being taken out of my taxes or something else, because again, I didn't receive a bill. It wasn't, again, we're, we're both, whether the accident was mine, yours, or, or whatever, it's just that I've never received it to pay until just a month ago. And then I'm trying to figure out how to get that paid. It's not that I'm, you know, it didn't take me four years to figure that out. I just, if I received a bill, I just, I wouldn't pay it. And I'm not knowing that for some reason you guys don't have my, my address. When I bought the house, I filled out all sorts of stuff with the new address, would be signing it with all of that. You would figure would, would set up for me to receive all the things that I would need to receive to pay from the town, from, from whoever it was, mortgage town, this and that, you know, like, it's, you know, it's not, I'm not looking here to screw the town or by any means. I love where, where I live, like, honestly.
All right, then I'll, I'll make.
Travis, question, question.
Go ahead.
With us not actually being able to fully blame one side or the other, would you be willing to at least waive half the fees? So we half, he pays half and then we haven't paid a full sewer? So it'd be like 812 or something like that, if you do math right? Because I do believe we, in four years, we could have tried to mail to that address one, and you've only been here a year, so don't take that towards you. We could have tried to mail to his new address at least one time in those four years.
And you're saying how much?
Whatever half the fees would be, so it's like 100.
Oh, come on now.
I, I did quick math, sorry.
It'd be 160.52, so half of that would be what, 80.26?
It'd be like 79, 790.
I'm sorry, 71?
I, whatever the half the fees, I didn't, I didn't see the additional line.
Call him, my mistake.
Well, get, yeah, get rid of the interest column.
Yeah.
And then waive half the fees. So we half, he pays half, because one of us on either side of this could have made a better effort, I feel. He could have came to the town, we could have tried to mail to that address.
Well, I believe, and maybe I'm wrong, but I always thought that it was the, everything is taxpayer's responsibility, not necessarily the town to hunt people down, so to speak.
Well, if I may.
Yes.
We do send out 4,800 tax bills twice a year. We do send out, gosh, I don't even know, at least 3,000 water and sewer bills four times a year. And to pick up on this would be impossible to, it would have to be some anomaly where, because it came to my attention only because the property was up for deed this year, the year 2022, any tax liens from that year came up for deed. So that is how it came to my attention. But with so many bills out there, it's, no, you know, it would be impossible to go through everyone. That would be like calling everybody and be like, hey, your, your, your tax bill's due next week, or sending out notifications or something.
No, I, I mean, within the past four years, though.
Yeah.
Again, you weren't here. I feel there could have been some type of correspondence before leaving.
If, if we waive our half of those fees, Travis, it comes to $812.89. So that is paying his sewer bills and dividing the fees, the 84 and 116.25 and a half. If I hit my machine right, it comes to $113.13.
May I also add that these are just the past due leaned amounts, but the first three issues of 2024 are still outstanding as well. And that's on the statement that I gave you. Total of as of 10/16 as of today, 214, or 20, I can't see it, 214.91.
Those can get cleaned up within the year easily, within the month, probably. I mean, that's not going to hit a lien anytime soon.
Well, the first two issues are over 90 days overdue. We just sent out notification for that for water and sewer customers in the town.
And how much were those each?
Total's 214.91.
Each notice is just standard mail, so it's like 72 cents or something. But the first two issues of 2024 are over 90 days overdue. So I would recommend that those be cleaned up as well.
I mean, I, I want to get to where I have zeroed up bill due. I have zero tech, I have zero sewer liens on my house. And we start over and I can, I, you know, I, I have no problem doing this. I, I obviously will get my, my address fixed, I'll pay it all, however it be, I just need to know.
So basically, whatever's owed for the sewer, get the sewer paid and waive half the fees that we're sitting here looking at, is what I'm talking about then. I don't know what else is due. Like you just said, there is more due for the sewer.
Is there a way to come up with that full number?
I think I just did.
You know, not due interest on all that.
$1,027.80.
Well, if it's 812.89 is the amount that they recommend.
Add the 214.91.
Right, so that's.
$1,027.80.
Is that, the 214, is that all bills or is that half?
That's the current outstanding bills that are passed over.
There is like 3, 4.50 in interest because those are outstanding as well. $4.50, but the total would be, as John said, $1,027.80 to clear everything.
That brings you current.
Motion for that. That's how I look at it.
I'm good with that.
If you're willing, I'm willing.
Yeah, if you're willing to cut this cleared up right away.
Click, click it up today, good.
I'll go down and pay it today, honestly.
That'd be wonderful.
You have the right number, Jen?
I do. 1,027. So you are waiving half of the cost and fees and the interest total amount on the past due 812.89 and the current due 214.91.
Can I make anything fancy? Can I make that, can you make that into a motion for me if I just say I moved that? Thank you. That's my motion then.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, that passes. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Please do your address change today.
Please.
Yes, make sure Jen has the address changed. Thank you.
Do I hand this to you, Jen?
I'll see you at the office. Yep, yeah, you know where this phone call is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, highway safety grant acceptance.
Every year, Lieutenant Belanger applies for the highway safety grant, and I know Chief and Steve Ross will here to talk more on that. We kind of get this grant every single year, so we just have a standard motion, that highway safety grant. I'd like you to read into record for accepting that grant. I gave you a printout of, we have a fed, we have a, a local match and then the federal match. And I believe that the police department is using their local match of the 4,523 out of their either equipment or salaries, training, et cetera.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, yes. I'll make a motion to accept in accordance with RSA 31:95-B, an Office of Highway Safety grant in the amount of $16,169 from the New Hampshire Department of Safety with matching funds in the amount of $4,523 to come from the police department budget. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, that passes. Board of Selectmen invite to the hazardous mitigation meeting, October 22nd at 10 o'clock in the morning. Is anyone planning to attend that meeting?
Deb can give you an update, but it is actually the 29th, not the 26th.
Okay, 29th.
Scratch that off your agenda and I will obviously send a reminder. Deb can talk about the program and why your invite is out there.
So it's, it's our here to update the hazard mitigation plan. And I mentioned this a couple of Selectmen's meetings ago, that at least someone should be showing up and then they've kind of slipped through both of you, Sean and I. So we have two more. Um, so we have two more coming up, definitely, well, definitely one more. There was a stroke with scheduling, I guess. So the next one's the twenty-ninth. I would like at least one board member there to just kind of be part of this plan. And someone was part of it last time around, I, I don't remember who it was. But it would be nice to get one board member there to represent.
Okay.
Cause the department heads are there, myself, the chief, or his delegate, comes, uh, highways there, uh, Karen, and we've come to a couple. Cause just based on what the needs are, or hazard mitigation, we got, you know, planning, she knows the area, coenforcement, myself, my assistant chief, and then the police.
This is meeting still at ten o'clock?
It's at ten o'clock here.
You don't?
On the twenty-ninth.
I can do it as long as I'm out by one.
Oh, I hope you're out by one.
What, what day is that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay. Good.
And the more the merrier. But.
I will pencil it in.
We're just finishing up this plan. It should be definitely done by the end of November. So we're kind of ahead of the game right now. And then it gets sent off to the state to approve it, but.
And that's for so many years, right?
Every five years, yeah.
Every five years, okay. Okay, all right, okay. Um, you're, you're going to attend?
I'll go here.
All right, I'll put a question mark. I don't have my calendar with me, so, um, I can't remember, right off the top of my head. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, police department resignations.
So we had the, two officers who resigned, one effective tomorrow, another one effective the twenty-fifth of this month. One is getting out of law enforcement, going to private sector, and the other one is going to Frankland Police Department.
Okay, all right, okay.
And I'll see that leaves us with four vacancies on the roster and the grant positions, so there's five.
Okay, all right. Halloween twenty twenty-four.
Yes, just giving you a public update that, um, Halloween will be held on our normal day, Thursday, October thirty-first, and will be hours though, five to eight. I confirmed that with the chief, we've been with those hours. And we've also updated, uh, I think it's W N R, who have called out and reached and asked. Uh, and I think Danielle's doing a trunk retreat on the twenty-sixth in, uh,
Parking lot here?
In the parking lot here.
That was what, very well attended.
Yes, it was, it was. And I think we're gonna have a DJ and a dance party on the twenty-sixth under, under the pavilion, so hopefully we get a lot of attendance.
Good, awesome, all right. Twenty-sixth? Oh, oh, time?
The, the trunk retreats, it's at night, or?
Yeah, yeah, it's at night.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen also on the twenty-sixth.
Sixteen.
Um, do we have any other new business?
Uh, yes, I had some other new business coming kind of last minute, um, the chief has asked to come aboard.
Uh-uh.
So, you, you guys have met with Captain Akersum this morning. And he has been working with me since the beginning of this year in hopes of being the successor to my position in March. And I'm here to tell you that I support that decision. And I'd like to see him take over my position in March when I retire.
March what?
Of twenty-five.
What day?
The day I decide to leave.
Keep it up, Mark.
I believe it's March second, I think it ends, so.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Um, and I'll make a motion to, um, accept, uh, Mark's recommendation and to, um, appoint, uh, Steve Akersum as our incoming police chief, March twenty twenty-five.
Sure.
And I'll second that motion.
All right. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposition?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome. Okay, um, any old business? Or any other new business, I guess?
No.
Okay, any other old business?
No.
All right, um, any public, oh?
Oh, just a reminder that, um, there is on October twenty-second is the, um, joint meeting with the Canterbury, Canterbury Board Selectmen, I think the Canterbury.
Yeah, at the Canterbury Elementary School.
Board, the Ballack's Board and yourselves, if you guys are able to be.
Do you know that again?
October twenty-second, and that's at what time?
Six P M.
Six.
Was it six or six-thirty?
It's six P M, the school board meetings are, and it's at Canterbury Elementary School.
Yep.
It's at the Canterbury Elementary School?
Yep.
Oh, we get the small chairs?
No, they said they recommended.
He promised.
He promised we'd have big chairs.
Those library chairs are horrible.
Okay, um, public comment, I saw somebody, Chief, oh, one, one second, Mark, go ahead. Chief.
So, just to let you know, just to let you know that the tanker has been sent to the white farm. It did go via, uh, tow truck, so it is no longer stationed at, got on fire.
Okay, awesome, thank you, all right.
When is the auction?
Truthfully, I forgot it. He sent it down, it's either this Sunday weekend or weekend after, I, I, I don't know. Senator Carter can handle that stuff. It had to be down last Thursday, it was sent down last Thursday.
Good, all right, Mark.
Hope you don't mind me reading this, and then obviously, uh, the comments. Uh, in September, I'm gonna go with some numbers with Alicia. Could take the temperature and the current budget situation in anticipation of our reconvening the Budget Committee in November. And after a conversation with Chairperson Looney, she suggested might be prudent to alert the selectmen. In my view of the budget, the tactics I'm gonna propose in the upcoming Budget Committee sessions, I'll be brief. As you know, we proposed twenty twenty-five operating budget of ten point six billion, and the town meeting was defeated. As a result, we reverted to default, two point four million. Also, uh, critical warrant articles were defeated, most notably seven hundred and fifty thousand for highways and half a million for, uh, capital reserve. So we're forced by the voters to restrict town spending despite the inflationary pressures we also had of and gone. Not the best of all circumstances, but the town did respond well as I expected. But budget situation has become even more acute based on the warnings we heard from some department heads. Uh, they've informed us that now or very soon, it's gonna be critical to make substantial capital outlays for police and fire department vehicles to maintain the high level of safety we're accustomed to. We also heard from, uh, uh, about the ongoing water pipe problems and will likely have to replace, uh, some costly components, and that's the best case scenario. Moreover, the town also took a hit on higher employee health insurance costs, which was demanded by outside service providers, over which we have little or no control. And our employee compensation spending for new hires is increasingly under pressure by regional municipal competition for diminishing labor pool. All of these line items increasing costs were further compounded by being unable to project for an extended inflationary spike in labor and benefit costs. With these added operating expenses and necessary capital expenditures looming, it's my view that we must look to restrain spending even further so we can meet the critical warrant needs and necessary capital expenditures and operating expenses that were proposed in the prior budget. Thus, what I'm planning to put forth in Budget Committee is this. We petition each and every department head, no exclusions, prior to the appearance of Budget Committee, that they cut ten percent in their budget request, and this is excluding department labor and benefit costs. Uh, they will be asked to present cuts at Budget Committee prior to the vote for the department's budget, which of course we then send on board of selectmen. I propose that we redistribute the cost savings from these department cuts to be put in the general fund of wherever appropriate towards leasing or finance of the items that were defeated in the warrant requests and/or for expenses, expenses and expenditures as you see fit. With the next budget documents presented to voters at twenty twenty-five town meeting, I would suggest that the language appearing with these specific spending requests be presented in bold letters and read, something to the effect that no amount of additional funds to acquire these items will be raised by increased taxation. Now, I expect considerable pushback from the departments, but in truth, I've never seen a budget that could not be cut by five or ten percent. Uh, will it result in a lower level of service in some areas? Quite possibly, but maybe not. Uh, since we've entered an era of needs versus wants, in my view, we need to reallocate those projected, I'm sorry, proposed adjusted department savings for most critical needs. We've got to reiterate to the voters that we're responding to their voices from the prior town meeting, but that we have also been subjected to massive inflationary pressures beyond which we could not plan. As a result, we're forced to confront and control what we can. Now, uh, I don't predict that I do plan. I, you know, I look for indicators that have become trends, as I look at things from an economics point of view. Um, I, I think times get tougher and will even get more so. And so when I think of alternatives, uh, you know, we, we can, uh, do, I think there are four different paths, and please correct me if I'm wrong here. We can search out and negotiate new service providers, even though we have good deals with some of them, particularly for, I think it was, uh, fuel and electric, I don't know about health insurance. Uh, we can raise taxes, we can pound on the legislative doors down in Concord for relief from some of these RSAs, which basically hamstring us, or we can cut costs. We can control one of those, and that's the cost cuts. And I just think that we're up against it. Uh, we have financial realities staring us in the face. And, uh, you know, the warrant articles that were defeated last time, I thought, wow, you know, we've, it's gonna put us in a tough spot, and it already has, at least from what I've heard. So I just think that, uh, we've gotta double down on cost savings and, and start cutting budgets um, outside of, uh, personnel and, uh, benefit costs. So I'm ready to hear from you.
Quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Were you on the Budget Committee last year?
Yes.
Okay, and then follow up to that then. We go through this with a comb, and then you guys really should be going through this with a fine-toothed comb, but the Budget Committee sent us a higher budget than we sent them last year.
Uh, it was my understanding that we just approved what you suggested.
No, you mean three steps.
Okay, well, that's the case, then I stand corrected. However, uh, I did question in committee, uh, some of those costs. And, uh, basically, uh, not throwing anybody under the bus, it just appeared to me that we were essentially, from my view, from my view, not anybody else's, that we were a bit of a rug stamp.
That's not even close to the truth. My estimate, I've been sitting here longer than anybody on this board, and I was on the planning board before that. We set a goal twenty years ago, we had an engineer come in and look at our roads, cause we were getting. And he said, you got a problem, you're east, you're the east-west transfer. People come down from ninety-three, they wanna get to Governor's Island, they wanna get to Laconia, they're going through your, your roads, and I just won forty, but the side streets. You're gonna have to put some improvements in, and that will show additional land value, one point. And he's made that, I live on a side road that connects to Union Road, and the houses that they built in the last sixteen, eighteen months, there's eight of them, are six hundred thousand dollars a pop, and they're selling. We took good care of the road, we just resurfaced a portion of it, just put a top coat on it. And the planning board brought forth an article back then to spend a million dollars a year on our roads to get them back up. We cut that back several years ago in order to save money and put, just, never mind, you know, we'll do less. We have a couple of roads, and this past year, we didn't do any. We, we just did repairs.
Yes.
You can't continue like that, it'll be back to where we started from twenty years ago.
Okay.
And with the, and with what the price of asphalt and fuel is, it costs a million dollars doesn't go far. And seven hundred and fifty went less than five hundred thousand, went less than that.
I don't disagree with you, but that's on the spending side. I'm talking about, you know, we've got a, we had, since the warrant for roads, for example, to use your example, that wasn't passed, correct?
No, the whole budget, the whole budget was turned down.
Obviously, that would be needed, but my view is that if we cut costs across the board in the other departments, we put that warrant article back out there and say, no additional taxes are gonna be raised to fund this highway request, and with your example, we're gonna be in better shape.
I think if we could send three tax bills to every household that pays taxes, it would be great improvement, cause we'd send them a bill from the town, a bill from the school, and a bill from the county. And they would see that seventy-six cents of a dollar goes to the school, not to the town.
Well, indeed, and I, uh, you know.
And you wanna talk to them about cuts? I will, good luck.
I do actually wanna talk.
Good luck.
We, you know, when I.
You should get on the school budget committee.
Well, you know, this is the thing. We had to, we had to vote or give approval, I'm not quite sure what it was, on the school budget, our contribution to it, in Budget Committee. I don't understand why they don't have to be in front of us.
Neither do we.
Well, so, okay, this goes right back to my.
We, 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 we did this fifteen, sixteen years ago. We went to a meeting and they just sat as a select board, and we sat there, and the Gilman, the people were there.
No, Canterbury.
Canterbury, excuse me, and we sat there, we watched the school board have a full-blown dinner in front of us. They sat there, and then all they wanted, there was, was no discussion.
So, I, I, and I've heard this, I've heard this. And this is why one of my options here was to go pound on the doors in Concord and say, you're gonna give us some relief from these RSAs, because they're just presenting us bigger and bigger and bigger bills, and we have no say other than to say, yeah, okay, we're gonna pay it.
Well, we're not the only town. Every town is faced with this until the state of New Hampshire steps up to the plate and starts funding, helping to fund public schools, because unfortunately, less and less money are coming back to the schools and more and more money is being put on the individual taxpayers, okay? So until the state of New Hampshire opens their eyes and maybe spends less on, I don't know, lottery fee or lottery, um, you know, mucky mucks, or whatever you wanna call them, and start sending it back to the towns like it was meant to be, okay? We're sitting here and, and we're only one pimple on a whatever in the state of New Hampshire, okay? And you are right, there's RSAs for everything, okay? And what can I say? I'm only one per, we're, we're only one little board, and we can't disagree, but, but, when you need a fire truck, when you need an ambulance, when you want your road plowed, when you want your trash picked up, and what did I miss?
Cops.
The cops, the cops. You want a police officer? That we're losing two more right now? If you don't pay for them, if you don't pay for those services, you're not gonna get all of that, and people won't.
And that's why I said excluding labor and benefits costs.
Well, labor and benefits is one thing, but if we don't have safe equipment for our employees to be our police officers, our fire department, why, why pay labor? Because we're not gonna have anybody, cause we're not gonna have the equipment for them to respond to this stuff, our highway department.
I don't disagree with any of these things. I'm saying that we have to do something to really address this and get ahead of what we can. I mean, we're already behind the eight ball, but I'm saying it's only gonna get worse, in my view, I could be wrong.
About seven years ago, we invited the governor to a meeting, and he came. And we sat there with, with people, businessmen in the area, and we talked, and I asked him, I said, now, if you buy a new car, or you buy a car, and you go in and you register it, and you pay a tax, pay a town tax, which goes to the state, you pay the registration, which goes to the state. A average new ship, new pickup truck, probably fifty grand for an average truck, four-wheel drive for guys gonna buy. So your tax, your tax of registered, that's probably somewhere around eleven, twelve hundred bucks. That goes to the state.
Yes.
You buy a new boat for three hundred and forty thousand dollars, costs you twenty-four dollars to register it, because they got the best lobbyists in the world down there, and they don't charge for those things. And I said, just to relieve, every small town's. And I said, just to relieve every small town's, and it's the schools, and big, every one of us is a school, it's killing us.
I agree.
Travis.
So my viewpoint on this is, you're the legislative body with executive body. We have no say over what you do. You can go to these department heads and ask them to have a meeting with you, and if they don't, that's shame on them. So I think you should go to them, ask them if, in your opinion, where they can cut, what they can cut, give you something, and then you can bring it to your Budget Committee and present it there, or deal with them there. But I just don't want us to see a bigger budget come back from the Budget Committee again, like we didn't.
Nor do I, that, that's the whole impetus behind this.
And I'll be perfectly honest with you, we're in, the select board is in the budget process right now, working the budget through to, to move on to the Budget Committee, and our department heads are, at this point, are skimping and saving, okay? And again, you're right, there's some things we can't control, all right? Is a budget gonna decrease? It will not decrease. I mean, we got hit with 16 percent, health and benefits.
I don't control.
I mean, where, where, and do we go out and shop around? I mean, everybody shops, and we're in the same as other towns, all right? It's.
I don't disagree, so you have to control what you can control. Those are external things that we cannot control.
I know, but those external things make up a majority of these people's budgets. So just take for police, if you, I think 10 is way too much. If just for police, you'd be asking them to cut $330,000 from their budget. That's almost all of his budget of his discretionary spending that isn't wages and retirement and, you know, health insurance and all that. I have a hard time getting him to cut probably 50,000. You think he's gonna cut 330?
Well.
And, and, and the police department?
Probably cut 30, you know, 300,000 from his budget.
I think it might be beneficial if you do it by top department, because for example, Karen brought us a budget that is lower than her 2025 default budget. Why would, should, so if we get default, her budget's actually gonna be higher than what she's asking for.
And you have budgets that decreased by a thousand dollars, but because they have small budgets, they look like they had a 10 or 15 percent increase. You want to decrease that by 10, they'd be in the negative.
I think the, the rubber stamp saying is kind of, it falls on the main site. We're sitting here, we're going through the budgets now. We trust our department heads to bring us solid numbers. We've been telling them all year, they've been struggling, working under the default budget, trying to find money in other areas to cover the things that they need to have. So the, our department heads are very aware of how hard this is. So they have come to us with absolutely, this is what we need, not necessarily what we want, and they've pared it down, and they've done a good job. And we've had several instances with some things that we've said, you know, we've cut back even more. But like Travis said, we're that branch, and so we send it to the Budget Committee, and the Budget Committee trusts our department heads, and they trust the Board of Selectmen that they sent them a good thing. A lot of people on the Budget Committee don't ask questions. There was a little more, I sat through a few last year, just because I was bored that day. There was more questions than there had been in the previous two years, because I was actually on the Budget Committee before I was elected to this position. But it's about trust, and because you're new to town and you have questions, and there's new people that are gonna be on your board this year, it's your job to ask those questions and pick apart what we did. We're doing the best we can to send you good, solid numbers.
Yep.
And then you're at the Budget Committee level, that's your driving force right there.
I, I ask questions.
Yeah.
It makes people uncomfortable, I would say.
But you're asking the questions, and if you feel the questions have to be asked, then that's what you were elected to do, and then that makes you good at your job.
So basically, as the executives, because I've worked on the legislative side at the county, doing the budget there, the executive commissioners there, they send us a budget of what it takes to run the county, and for example, for either the town, at the status that we are maintaining services at. And legislative body, we look at it and say, do we actually need these services, or can we move it here or there or get rid of it? That's more or less where I look at you guys, to be the more pickier people and say, does the town value this service or not? But we are showing you what it takes to run this town as is in maintaining services that we currently provide.
And then when the county gets done doing their budget, we get the bill. We get whatever, we, we have to support the county, so that's part of your tax bill.
There's no waiting for default in the county.
So, you know, it, it's, yeah, I mean, the other issue is, is that for me, it's public safety. Public safety is huge, all right? And if we, if we continue in the road we're going, we are not gonna be able to provide public safety, okay? And you're not gonna feel, you're not gonna, you or me, whatever, we as taxpayers, will get to the point where we don't feel comfortable in our home, because we don't know if we have to call 911, if anybody's gonna show up, all right? And if we don't pay, it boils down, unfortunately, to money. If you're not gonna pay, you're not gonna have the people. I understand, there is a limit, all right? And we as a town have a limit, all right? But, you know, paying people's one thing, but if you want to put a police officer in a cruiser that should have been turned in two years ago, and want him to go to respond to whatever, and what I would consider could possibly be an unsafe cruiser, we're out of sync right now. We didn't get our two cruisers last year.
That's exactly why I mentioned the police and fire vehicles in the state.
Yeah, it's brutal.
Didn't buy them.
I'm sorry?
We didn't buy them, we didn't have the money.
Oh, I understand.
We, we, we asked for the money, and they said, no, thank you.
And, and, exactly, right. And so, again.
But again, the Budget Committee, members of the Budget Committee last year approved the budget. There was only one no vote last year at one meeting, and that happened to be my daughter, and I was on a school issue. They all voted unanimously for the budget that was presented. Yet, three of them stood outside of the voting place, saying, if you don't know, vote no. So how many guys spent the time that you did to look, like we do, to look over this? Yes, sometimes the Budget Committee's not as close as we are. We, we deal with these department heads almost on a weekly basis for one problem or another, or have discussions about customers wanting something, and that's where they call the Selectmen, the Planning Department. I went in there just the other day, and a taxpayer had an, had an issue, didn't know what to do. It was no big thing, she handled it in minutes. But they, who do I go, what do I say? John, would you go do this? So you do it. But they stood outside after voting yes and then sending the budget forward and told people to vote no.
Stop bribing people.
So that's where we are. We are working through the budget. We are, our department heads all were notified ahead of time, okay, that, cut. And again, in your statement, it is, it isn't a water pipe problem, it is a sewer problem that we have on 140, and it's out of our control. It's a state sewer line, and if the state chooses to replace that whole line, we, as a town, have to absorb that.
But haven't we been patching it, haven't we been?
Oh, yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
It's, it's.
It doesn't matter, doesn't matter. The state owns it. And when we patch it, we gotta pay for the patch. When they tell us what they're going to do with that line, we have to do what they say.
Unfortunately, the Constitution of New Hampshire does say they can't downshift, but it doesn't matter. Both parties downshift on the towns. And they bark at it, I, I wasn't, I was in the State House, I'll be done in January. But I hear from both sides, oh, we can't downshift, can't downshift, both sides do it, and it's never gonna change, unless we change who's in there.
And the state put that line in, we didn't. And if you go down on Laguna Swamp, all along the railroad tracks, you see that big cement box comes all along that. This, this sewer line goes right through a known swamp with traffic count going way up, so it vibrates this thing like a bowl full of jelly, and it's broke. Why didn't they put that in the cement box like they did along the lake? But it's our fault. It is.
Well.
And we, we are, we are doing the best that we can.
I know you are, I know you are. That's why, that's, that was all.
And again, you know, sometimes, Mark, you, you, how do I want to say? You can beat it to death, and, you know, you're gonna cut off your nose to spite your face, all right? Because you can only cut stuff so much, you can only take out so much, and you're going to compromise the safety of this town. It's unfortunate.
I mean, my recommendation would be get your budget book as early as you can. If you have questions, meet up with your department heads, talk to them, and then come to this meeting and talk to your other committee members. You obviously have to get a majority to do anything, so it's, I mean, unfortunately, talking to us isn't gonna change the votes on the Budget Committee.
Well, understood, but I mean, Ruth said that I should appear in front of you.
And that's, and yes, and that is fine, that's, that's important, it's, it is.
But the other thing is, the Budget Committee's budget that you bring forward to the voters, the Board of Selectmen, you have to spend money.
Well, I can tell you this, they're probably not gonna be happy to have me on the committee during this upcoming session, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep pushing, because we, we cannot, at least in my view, continue on the same path as we are, because we do need new police vehicles, we do need new fire vehicles, and I don't know what the situation with the water plant is, we're gonna have to keep patching it.
Yeah, we're not elected to be like, we're elected to do the right thing for the town. So whatever you think is right thing, you're elected official in your position, do what you think is right.
Patrick.
I, I just want to say one thing, we as department heads know that we're in a fight that we're gonna have with this budget. We know that, we understand that, that's why we're going in skin of our teeth. But we, Mark, just to let you know, we have budget members out there in the public right now that have approached us and told us they're not gonna approve anything. They've already made up their mind, they haven't seen our budgets, they haven't done anything.
So they're not gonna approve anything?
Their, their, their statement is, we're not gonna do any increases on the budget, we're gonna, we're gonna default the budget. And that's what they're going around and telling people. They're actually telling some of the employees, they told us, and I'm not gonna name the Budget Committee people, but that's what we know that we're heading into in November when we come to see you.
Well, that, again, that.
And so, again, here you go. If you've got that group of people out there, then you come in and say, we want 10 percent cut here, or you want this or that, maybe you'll get the vote, but you're the one that has to sleep at night now.
Well, that's encouraging.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's just, Kim.
From the Planning Department Code Enforcement and Conservation, I just want to extend the invitation to any Budget Committee member. You're reviewing a budget, most people have no idea what my department does, at all. I'm extending the invitation, come in and stop in and see me. I will explain everything that we do, so that when you are looking at the budgets, which as all of the department heads have done, we have gone through these budgets with a fine-tooth comb and den song. We need to maintain at least our basic services with the budgets that we're presenting. If any member wants to come in and see what my department does on a daily basis, which changes as all of us do, on the fly. We are reacting, you've got somebody who walks in, like John said, if he walks in with a member of the public who has an issue, we deal with it. So we, you know, we are making our budgets as, as best we can, and my department, I know, is, you know, everybody knows what the police do with the fire. My department tends to be very misunderstood, same thing with code enforcement. The Budget Members, I, it's an open invitation to come in, talk to me, see my department, and see what we really do.
I want to make one thing clear, I'm not attacking anybody, I'm just looking at numbers, that's all.
And that's, I'm just extending the invitation, so if you are looking at the numbers, you know what you're looking at.
Right, and this is why I, this is why the whole concept was not me coming in and saying, you've gotta do this or this. I'm leaving, I would leave it completely up to the committee heads, and each, I mean, the department heads. Because I don't know them, I don't know the department.
We've had department heads come before us in the past and give us their, whatever, you know, give us their budget, and ask them to go back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
Okay, we've done that in the past, all right? Right now, we're not, because we're, we're skinny as we, as it is, so.
We did with the Corrections and Sheriff's Department, they literally laughed there and said, you will never get this through the delegation, and made her go back in a whole new budget, because it was just terrible. I mean, some, I don't see it here in our department, I came in here being a fiscal hawk, and I tried and tried, they honestly, especially this year, some of the budgets, I didn't even have questions for, because they were so tight, so even below default. I'm like, where could I even think about cutting? And I get, there could be some stuff out there, I'm not saying there isn't.
The other, the other thing. And the other thing that kind of makes me nervous, all right? We've seen what's happened in the country.
Yeah.
All right? And this is where I get ner, you can get too skinny, and God forbid, if something happened, whether it be a storm, it could be an earthquake, it could be anything. We got nothing, okay? That's the scary part.
And, you know, I, I couldn't agree more. And again, I don't predict, I try to plan.
Yeah.
Because I know things like that happen, and.
And that's what we're trying to plan for, but unfortunately, when you say you want to see a 10 percent decrease in everything, we can't plan for anything, because we're cutting and we're so skinny, we have nothing in reserve. God forbid, if there was a, I'll say, a disaster of some sort, whatever it is, so.
Well, okay, so, let's assume for a moment that we just continue on as we are. Where does that leave us? Something's gotta give, something has to give. We, I mean, you squeeze a balloon in the middle, and it's gonna come out somewhere else. Well, if we don't cut costs, it's gonna come out in level of service.
That's the thing, the only thing you're gonna find is cutting services. So you have, you guys at the Budget Committee have to figure out if, what services you guys.
Do you wanna, you wanna stop trash pickup?
I don't wanna stop anything.
Do you want, do you want to stop salting the roads, sanding the roads? Maybe don't plow, don't even go out to plow till you've got, what, three or more inches of snow down? And then people are gonna have accidents, and they're gonna come after the town, because we haven't done a good job. You want, maybe we'll put our police department on a Monday through Friday from eight to four? And it's a free-for-all the rest of the time? I mean, those are the kind of places, put the fire department, they're only gonna be able to go out, I don't, you know, whatever, okay?
This would be left up to department heads, I'm not in any position to do that, I'm looking at.
But if you're cutting the budget to the point of wanting everything cut 10 percent, something's gotta give from the department heads. It's easy to say I want everything cut 10 percent.
It's not easy.
No.
I understand that.
It's.
Yeah, again, I think we can beat this all day, but I think your best chance at that would be looking at your budget book, looking at the percentages you see, going to department heads that you feel that could be possible, that's talking to them, figuring it out with them, and bringing it back to your Budget Committee, because that's the only thing, I don't think across the board, things are gonna work at all in this town, but I think you could find something that you guys could skinny down if you wanted to.
Well, okay, let me say this one thing about 10 percent. That was a number I picked to get people's attention, innocence.
It worked.
Wow, man, it's a million dollars essentially, right?
Well, okay, fine, but you know, ultimately, ultimately, it's open and gambit.
I think what, another suggestion on a strategy would be, let's just say, Patrick wanted a new truck. Instead of raising and appropriating money for that new truck, what you could suggest, and, and any other department say, all right, your truck is 20,000, instead of raising appropriate 20,000, why don't you show me reductions in your budget that would compensate that, so you're not raising it? So that's another way you could ask questions through these department heads, PV, if they want a new, if you wanted to maintain budgets kind of at a default, you know, if they needed a new cruiser, what, what can you cut to get a new cruiser, or can you, or can you not? Making those suggestions, making those cuts, okay? And that's what we have done in a reduced default, we had a default, we still needed to pay employees and pay for other services that weren't in the default. So we made redu, or an additional reduced default budget, where we said, all right, you want this, what are you gonna cut? So we've already done that and dealt with that, that could be another way you tackle it.
That was, that was actually the entire concept behind this, because what cuts that would come about, I mean, I'm assuming the same level of, of tax revenue coming in, we reallocate the savings from those cuts towards items like that that are necessary.
You can't reallocate, so your comment was.
Go to the general fund if we cut?
We only put a expense out there, and that's what we get paid in taxes, we don't.
I'm sorry, say.
We put our expenses out there, and that's what we collect in taxes. We cannot tax more than we're putting on the budget to expend.
So if you're cutting the million, you don't get to still raise and appropriate the million and then put it into a savings account, because that defeats the whole purpose of what you wanted to do. But if you're cutting the million, we're not raising or incorporating that extra million, so there's no extra to put into a savings account.
We don't have a set tax.
And keep in mind, Mark, that the police, the police contract did not pass. So every other department, all right, skinnied up some money to move into the police department, so we could give our police officers a monthly bonus, so we would even have police officers, all right? Because we could not. Because we could not give them, the, their contract was voted down by the voters.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the only way that we could keep our police officers employed was to, to rely on our other budget, our other department heads to move, be able to move money.
Alicia, didn't you just say you couldn't do that, though?
Well, we could, because it was a default budget.
A default, they give us how much they, which is, they give us a bottom-line number, then we have to make a whole new budget off that bottom-line number.
Yeah. Yeah. So on top of it being a default budget, it put our employees, all of them. They had to go back to the drawing board, they had to start all over. So all that time they spent in creating the budget, now they had to go back and recreate their budget, instead of doing what they should be doing. So it's just, it created...
The Hampshire's a hell of a mess when it comes to politics, welcome.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I'm...
Live free or die, we're all gonna die in New Hampshire paying property taxes. Okay, any other questions? You're welcome, thank you, Mark. Do we have any other?
Nope, I'll just make a quick statement after we end, um, our next meeting is November sixth.
Oh, is it? It's November sixth, guys.
Day after wedding day, boy, that'll be fun.
Um, we are going to take a quick break, and then we will start our budget process.
Do you guys wanna, for those that are gonna re, for those that are on Zoom who want to follow the budget, um, the board's budget meetings, how much time do you guys want to transition?
Half an hour? Half an hour, twelve-thirty or so? Twelve-thirty.
So we will restart the video at twelve-thirty, for anyone who's watching live, and the, um, YouTube channel.
Payroll and a G-Face.
G-Face.